...a great place to live, work, and play. And I don't know who had turned us in, but if you want to look at this company's done, you can get on www.watchcod.com. And that's Communities of Distinction. And they will come in and do a video. We would basically be over the video as far as the content. And we would have the final rights. And we could do it whichever way we would want it to go. It would be aired 20 times nationally, one time on Fox Business Network, and 19 other times in regional markets. And I did propose it to council, and they, I believe, were favorable to that. If it gets passed this evening, I know they're trying to look to start scheduling their timeframes, but we did call several of the communities, myself and former, our retired planning and zoning director, to get the feedback from some of the communities. And the feedback was positive. We called, contacted about six or seven different communities. And, you know, we would, it would probably take place this summer. To get the editing and everything done, it'd probably be in the market for the fall timeframe. So, I don't know if the council wants to pass that this evening or go first reading. You know, the sooner we pass it, the sooner we can get on the agenda. There will be a lot of work on the Villages Park to be able to get this implemented. Any comments or questions on this legislation?
Well, before I read through it, Mr. Mayor, I had a few concerns, and one of them was the filming schedule. I don't think we want them filming in northeast Ohio at this time of year.
I told them that.
But there's a lot of preliminary things that have to be done ahead of time. Questionnaires would have to be filled out, a script that has to be developed and everything else. So, I think that, um, I think it'll be at least spring before they're ready to do any filming, and that would be a great time to do it here.
Absolutely.
So, I don't have any problems with that.
Any other comments or questions on this piece of legislation?
Yes, just a little correction. That's one time nationally, 19 times originally.
One time nationally on the Fox Business Network and 19 times originally. And we could put that on our website. Uh, we would have control over the finished product and most of the product along the So, when it comes up for passage, you know, however council wants to act on that. The third one's an ordinance from finance, transfer, the bond transfer from the deposit trust fund to the general fund. Comments or questions on that? We normally pass that from finance with an emergency. The next one is an ordinance amending and restating an ordinance for the public records policy and designating the Bill Blank Clark to serve as a records custodian. Comments or questions on that?
The only thing, Mayor, on this is it's basically all the same, except for the fact that Bill's name was on it before his deputy clerk, and it's being changed to clerk.
Okay, any, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this piece of legislation?
I might see it passed, Mayor, because the auditors passed this here.
Okay, another one's from finance, an ordinance adopting an expenditure of public funds, proper public purpose policy recommended by the auditor of the state of Ohio for the village of Lorristown. The auditors are in doing our books, and they are making some recommendations, which I believe Bill is bringing forth to council as they come, so that way we can, uh, if they find some things which they would like to see us to do differently. I believe we're in the process of this, we're doing all these four, right, Bill?
Yes.
So, we'd probably like to have that passed?
I'd like to make a comment on this also, Mayor. I'd like to bring it to the attention of the department heads. You need to really look at this ordinance, because when we pass this ordinance tonight, the way the auditors are explaining it to us, Martha, especially like for your fund days and stuff, and I think Brent, you've done this before, and Dale does it, uh, we're going to bring this ordinance in if it passes tonight, but then you have to get a hold of the clerk, so he can get a resolution. We have to get a resolution, but a solicitor draw it up before you can get this money now. You can't, a department head cannot just spend money out of their account for refreshments anymore. This is by the auditors, not by us. So, if you buy coffee and donuts, or your popsicles and stuff, if you're still doing that, you have to get us a timeframe that we can bring a resolution through to cover it, or you can't be reimbursed. I don't think you'd want to be spending money out of your own pockets on this. So, that's why I wanted to bring this to the department heads' attention.
Mr. Mansell, I think the resolution that you're, uh, copying, is it, which one is it here? It's number three?
It's the...
Page eighteen?
One, two, three.
Page eighteen?
Five.
Page eighteen, yep. Um, it is an ordinance, and it should have attached to it the state auditor's bulletin and then a policy that we are enacting. And that, that appears on page...
It doesn't cover quite all that, Paul. The way it explained to me was we had to bring a resolution in.
Twenty-nine, I believe. Twenty-nine is the policy, and, and I don't think we need a separate resolution, because it, it says that, um, they have to get, uh, run this through the authority of the clerk's office. And frankly, the clerk needs to determine whether or not this is, um, for a public purpose. And coffee and donuts for employees is not a public purpose, that they're saying there. So, it's over.
No, we're talking about programs, like the summer fund days.
Oh, then that would be a separate, as part of the summer fund day ordinance.
Right.
You would allocate money for...
Our lighting celebration. We give refreshments to the communities. These are the things that I'm addressing. It's still run through the department heads.
Okay.
But they would need to notify us so that we can bring in a resolution covering these expenses.
Right. But, but as an ongoing basis for the employees?
No, we don't.
It's over.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this piece of legislation? Okay, the next one's, next one's from Safety Committee, and that's an ordinance to purchase a new 2014 Pierce pumper tanker truck. The one that we have now, I believe, is a eighty-one or eighty-two, and it's given us a couple of problems over the years, and money was allocated this year, so probably ask for passage this evening on that.
Yeah, I'd be asking for emergency passage on it, Mr. Mayor. The reason why is that the, um, build on, on these are seven, eight months. So, we want to get this started as soon as possible, and it's through the state purchasing program for the bid through Pierce Manufacturing, so anybody has any questions?
Any questions for... Okay, the next one's from Finance Committee, a resolution authorizing Arno A. Hill, Mayor of the village of Lorristown, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement, Local Transportation Improvement Program for the Palmyra Road resurfacing and safety upgrade project and to execute contracts as required, repealing this resolution, declaring an emergency. I believe that's there, because Dave Harrison was handling that, and he is no longer with us, so we need someone to be able to sign those contracts, and that's me. Any comments or questions on that? We probably should pass that this evening. And the last one from Finance, a resolution proclaiming the village of Lorristown's support of the issue of the 2014 May ballot, which authorizes renewal of the sale of bonds by the state of Ohio to fund the capital, state capital improvement program, skip, as administered by the Ohio Public Works Commission, and encouraging the voters of Ohio to vote yes on the issue and declaring an emergency. And this is skip of some funding which has been in place for quite a while. It's another program which does sunset unless it gets reinstituted, and it has worked for our community, so I believe we would like to have that passed this evening. Any comments on that? Any questions on the minutes from the regular meeting held January 21st, 2014? Are there any questions on the bills?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. During the, um, the meeting, I'll be making a motion that we amend the rules to include a, um, bill for Leonard Truck and Trailer for a hazmat trailer purchase for the fire department.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the bills? Anything else council would like to discuss at this time before we go into the regular meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Blank handed this advertisement from Mrs. Speed, a yearbook advisor from the Lorristown Village High School. And what it is, is for their, uh, we have done this before, paid for an ad, and it's individually, we, we donate so much money, and the, uh, the one that they donated before was for $200, so if everyone here, up here at the podium would want to donate, and just see Mr. Blank for $20 apiece, and they have until, uh, she would like this note later than April 1st of this year, so we can get the ad for the, uh, to advertise Lorristown Village in the yearbook.
I believe that'd be a half-page ad. Normally, everybody here before a council meeting, we usually take a picture to have it put in the yearbook also. Any objections to that?
We're just, if everybody's in favor of it, you know, we don't have to make a motion or anything. Would you gonna donate the money anyway? Make sure Mr. Blank gets it.
Okay, any other, anything else council would like to discuss during the caucus before we adjourn and go to the regular meeting?
Don, but I understand you, that just now commented to the mayor that he was gonna donate the money?
He is.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna give twenty bucks to you guys.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll now adjourn the caucus and start the regular meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. Please stand and join me for the Lord's Prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and we forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bill, if we get a rule call, please. Mayor Hill?
Present.
Mr. Bond?
Here.
Mr. Mansell?
Present.
Mr. Ratka?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Shealy?
Here.
Mr. Reader?
Present.
Clerk Blank?
Present.
Treasurer George Ebling?
Here.
Solicitor Paul Dutton?
Present.
Lead Chief Brent Milheim?
Here.
Fire Chief Travis Geeson?
Here.
Parks, Buildings, Grounds, and Streets Commissioner Dale Grimm. Recreation Marty Gibson?
Here.
Board of Public Affairs?
Present.
National Engineer Chris Yeller?
Present.
Entertaining motion, excuse Dale Grimm. He gave me a call earlier, said he was ill this evening. So, move. Move by Mansell, second. Second, Bond. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Entertaining motion for adoption of the agenda.
移到
Move by Jones, second.
Second.
Second, Shealy. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Entertaining motion for disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 21st, 2014.
So moved.
Move by Reader, second.
Second.
Second by Ratka. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Entertaining motion for payment of the bills.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the bills tonight to include a invoice from Leonard's Truck and Trailer for an amount of $14,690.15 for a trailer purchased through the Safety Committee for a hazmat trailer for the fire department.
Okay, everybody heard the motion, but Mr. Ratka amended the bills to add this bill as their second set. Second by Mansell. Comments? Bill, could we have a rule call on that, please? Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to add this bill as their motion to pay the bills as amended.
So moved.
Move by Mansell, second by Reader. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Mayor's report, I'll be asking, uh, I'll talk with Solicitor for three executive sessions this evening. Uh, I'll state the nature of those when they undergo business. That's it for the mayor's report this evening. Clerk's report?
No report, Mayor.
Any questions for Bill? Solicitor's report?
No report.
Any questions for Paul? Treasurer's report?
No report.
Any questions for George? Board of Trustees of Public Affairs report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any question for John?
Yes, I have a question. At our last meeting, uh, Mr. Campbell was here, and he said that he was meeting with Republic Services the following day, and then a letter would be sent out to the residents regarding what was going to happen with the, um, recycling collection. And I'm getting all kinds of calls from residents wanting to know what's going on. They've not gotten a letter. They just feel like they're being totally forgotten.
They're not totally forgotten, and, uh, he did meet with them, and there's, there's still some issues that haven't been resolved yet, and we're going to meet again, and should have something resolved before our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions for John? Okay, Village Engineers report?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, we have public comments later.
Okay.
Okay. Village Engineers report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Chris? Okay, Special Reports, Police Chief Milheim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've submitted my monthly report for January. Answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Brent? Fire Chief Easton?
I have two things, Mr. Mayor, want to report. Um, we did receive, our hazmat trailer did come in today. Um, that was the one we ordered back in October. Um, it was just delivered today. It's, uh, if anyone drove by, it's out in front of the station right now, um, in the parking lot, and I am asking for support on the tanker pumper. I think it's, uh, it's very well needed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Travis?
Travis, I just wanted to mention that I took the, um, binder upstairs for the, the new truck. I didn't know whether you wanted those back. Um, I don't know, maybe some of your guys down there would like to look through it or whatever.
That's fine. If you're done with it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through it.
It's up there for you. And is, and I would like to ask about this trailer. Is this the one that Hal Khan has provided funding for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this was part of the funding from them, and, um, some of the turnout gear we got delivered also came from that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Travis? Okay, planning and zoning, we have no one in that slot yet. Parks, Buildings, Grounds, Three Two Superintendent, not here this evening. Recreation, Marty?
No report.
Any questions for Marty? Bill, do we have any correspondence this evening? No correspondence, Mayor. Okay, public remarks. If you'd like to make a public remark after I acknowledge you, please come to the microphone and give your name and address, so we can get it recorded in the minutes correctly. Jack?
Okay. Jack Weatherrow, 5353 Palmyra Road. Um, calling about Republic Services for the trash collecting that's currently, um, I called them up on Friday with the intent to cancel my services towards them simply on, on a premises that meet personally. I have no loan or no cans to, uh, you know, to give these guys for recycling. I don't get a newspaper, but yet they're going to increase my, my, uh, my services to them, my $2.95 a month, which I don't really need, which I don't really need. And I don't understand why I should have to, you know, be put to that, you know, in that position. Why should I have to cancel my services for something that I've been using? And then I'd like to know if Republic Services, have they not been recycling before January of 2014? And why do we have to pay the extra money now to have it recycled?
Well, Jack, this is, you know, public comments, and if council or the BPA or somebody would like to respond, you know, this is where you can speak, but they don't have to, you know, answer questions.
I understand.
I will answer.
I just wanted to get my opinion out there, so everybody knew where, but there's gonna be more than one person like me out there in Lorristown, Ohio.
The last Board of Public Affairs meeting was standing room only, Jack.
Well, I didn't get a chance to voice my opinion there, so I'm, I'm here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other public remarks this evening? Okay, hearing none, are there any council remarks? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee reports. Finance, Mr. Mansell?
Yes, Mayor, there's five pieces of legislation tonight from Finance that I'd like to see passed, and there's one from council as a whole that I would like to see passed tonight.
Okay, any questions for Dawn? Okay, Parks, Buildings, Grounds, General Improvement, Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Reader?
No report this evening.
Any questions for Dawn? Public Safety and Welfare, Mr. Ratka?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we also have one piece of legislation on the agenda tonight we'd like to see passed as emergency for the, uh, pumper tanker. And we did have our first meeting of the year last, um, last week, and we just went over all the details on the pumper engine, so that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Ron? Public Utilities, Mr. Bond?
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Bob? Transportation and Recreation, Mrs. Jones?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Karen? Hearing none, Bill, could we have the first piece of legislation?
A planning commission for passage, an ordinance amending the Lorristown Village zoning map to reclassify a portion of the 10 acres of real property owned by Andrew K. Offshore, situated at 1229 Salt Springs Road, Lorristown, Ohio, parcel number 45-007979, from V2 Highway Business to Arwin Residential.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
I believe a motion to adopt.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt. Motion by Mansell to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jones. Comments? Rule call, please. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to adopt. This is ordinance 11, 2014. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for emergency passage, an ordinance authorizing the village of Lorristown to enter to an agreement with USM Studios, a Florida corporation of 6250 Coral Ridge Drive, Coral Springs, Florida, to produce and market a five-minute segment highlighting Lorristown as one of the best places to live, work, and play as part of Communities of Distinctions, America Today series, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell to suspend the rules, there a second?
Second.
Second by Shealy. Rule call, please. Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
移到
Move by Jones, second?
Second.
Second by Shealy. Comments? Rule call, please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to adopt. This is ordinance 12, 2014. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for emergency passage, an ordinance authorizing the clerk to make the following transfers from the deposit trust fund into the general fund and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Jones to suspend the rules, there a second?
Second.
Second by Shealy. Rule call, please. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
移到
Move by Ratka, second? Second by Bond? Comments? Rule call, please. Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to adopt. Ordinance 13, 2014. Next, please.
From Council as a whole for emergency passage, an ordinance amending and restating order number 86, 2007, adopting the village of Lorristown public records policy and designating William Blank Clark to serve as a records custodian and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Move to suspend.
Move to suspend the rules by Jones, second?
Second.
Second by Mansell. Rule call, please. Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Move by Mansell, second?
Second.
Second by Shealy. Comments? Rule call, please. Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's. Motion carried to adopt. Ordinance 14, 2014. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for emergency passage, an ordinance adopting an expenditure of public funds, proper public purpose policy recommended by the auditor of the state of Ohio for the village of Lorristown, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell to suspend the rules, second? Second by Shealy. Rule call, please.[1426.33] Roll call, please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. Motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Ratka, second.
Second.
Second by Reader. Comments?